Okay, ready? Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of June 28, 2016. Members present are Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hibeto Gonzalez.
Yes.
Diana Rio.
Yes.
Álvaro Lourido.
Here.
And myself, Joe Paz. Also present is Juan Pena, Planning and Zoning Director, and Jose Villalobos, City Attorney. It is 7:32 PM for the record.
First item tonight for approval will be the... Actually, it's only the minutes from 3/22/2016 and 4/26/2016. I just realized I didn't bring you the minutes from 3/22 unless you kept them from the last meeting. If you want, we could skip that and we'll come back to that later.
Okay, can we approve the...
Hold it. Yeah, you could do the...
The April 26?
Correct. Go ahead.
Okay, for the members that were here in that meeting, does anybody see a discrepancy on that?
No.
I read it and it looks accurate to me.
Can I make a motion to approve?
I second the motion to approve.
Okay, on the motion, Eugenio Gonzalez?
Yes.
Well, Hibeto Gonzalez was excused, and also Álvaro Lourido, and I vote yes. So it passes?
Okay, and we'll come back to the others afterwards. First item on new business, various hearing agenda item. Property addresses 901 Southwest 63rd Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 33144, Teresa M. Fuentes, and Michael Smart. Applicant is requesting a variance to build a seven-feet decorative fence in the rear of the property for privacy of their swimming pool in the rear yard, where six feet is maximum allowed in the rear of the property. This property is a corner lot within the distance of the commercial corridor.
Mr. Smart? Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Michael Smart, 901 Southwest 63rd Avenue. And by the way, Teresa Fuentes Smart.
We'll have to check her passport for that.
Okay.
Can... You're the homeowner, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a variance item, so if you have any questions for Mr. Smart, his application shows you a detail of the rear pictures of the property, and because the swimming pool's actually a little bit elevated in the property, the five... The six-foot fence doesn't really serve a purpose that he's intending to use, so that's why he's opting to go to seven feet if the board allows it.
Correct?
Yes.
And this property is adjacent to the CVS property?
Yes, we're on the opposite corner.
On the opposite corner?
We're on the southeast corner.
For the record, we've been notified 500 radius feet around this property about the variance.
Okay, and it is a public hearing?
It's a variance hearing, so you have to allow public participation.
Okay. And currently, there's a chain link fence there now?
We have a four-foot chain link fence, plus I put in a cherry hedge years ago. However, the cherry hedge does have pockets in there where you can see through. The previous owners of both property that is along the easement, they're all deceased now. So these new people that are in these buildings are renters. One of them, second time running as far as new renters. It doesn't give us the privacy that we want, because when the pool was built back, I think in 2008, it raised the level on the decking about a foot from where the easement is. So you put up a six-foot fence, when you're on the deck, it's like a five-foot fence. That's why I would like the extra foot to give me at least that measure of privacy. We have a fence, if you see the picture, there is a fence that runs in front of the property. We will be continuing that same look down the easement, except it will be seven foot instead of six.
And you're proposing the same color, right?
Yes, yes.
That bronze, brown color?
Yeah.
Aluminum fencing?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Smart, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The new proposed fence ends where the existing one starts, so it doesn't go past...
It actually starts from that one to continue and ends where the property line will make a 90-degree angle. Eventually, maybe, we would think about doing that run that would separate both properties, but right now, this is strictly for the easement.
Okay, but my question is, will it meet the existing fence or will it go beyond it? Beyond the existing fence?
The existing fence is a four-foot chain link.
No, no, I'm sorry. This fence? The decorative...
Yeah, it'll be the same similar look, except not as decorative in the...
But it doesn't go... It meets at a perpendicular.
Yeah, they butt up. They actually butt up.
90-degree angle.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, along the easement only is where it's proposed to be seven, or you're asking to allow the city to build it at seven feet along the easement? Okay. And the city is giving it a favorable recommendation. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Nope, there's nobody from the public to speak on the item for the record. Personally, I don't have a problem with that, and especially in your location, because we don't know what kind of development is gonna come down along 8th Street, and if this affords you a little more privacy, I personally don't have a problem with that.
Well, whatever they're doing on 8th Street is... This won't affect... It's not on that side.
Right, but still kinda close to it.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Smart?
Make a motion to approve?
I second.
Okay, on the motion, Eugenio Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hibeto Gonzalez?
Yes.
Diana Rio?
Yes.
Álvaro Lourido? And I'll vote yes, so it's been approved, sir.
Thank you. Now, can I start that anytime from this point on?
There's a 20-day appeal period, so you have to wait 20 days.
But I could tell it's gonna take about three weeks.
You can start the permit process, yes.
Okay, all right, excellent. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the motion was made by Gilbert?
Yes.
And seconded by Eugenio?
No, no.
Oh, Álvaro, I'm sorry. I got the wrong...
Gentlemen, I don't know why you're here tonight. I mean, you're welcome to be here, but if there's a specific item that you're interested in, we did have an FPL hearing.
Yes, that's the item. I heard it was postponed to this point.
Okay, I'm over here.
Oh.
Yes, the FPL item, they actually withdrew the first application that they did, and the next application will be here on the July 26 meeting, which is the one that they were discussing.
Okay.
So that will be back on July 26. Okay? I just don't wanna waste your time if you're...
My name is Steven Rojas, and I think I spoke with Mr. Pena. My name is Steven Rojas, and my address is 6037 Southwest 14th Street. I'm in alternate. I believe I spoke to Mr. Juan Blanas, and he referred me over to you, so I spoke to you maybe about a month ago and asked me to come down, so I'm here.
Okay. Well, we'll take... Raise your right hand and we might as well swear you're in right now, so...
I don't have the document. Do you have the document?
You need one?
Well, no.
Yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the State of Florida, and the ordinances and laws of the City of West Miami?
Yes, sir.
For the position that you are about to assume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're hereby appointed.
Congratulations. Thank you, nice to meet you all.
You could stay. You could stay. Your last name again was Jose?
Rojas.
Rojas.
Steven.
Oh, Steven, I even changed your name, great.
We'll get you a certificate later on, so we can go back tomorrow.
At the next meeting. And we'll also provide you with the ordinance, so you could... Well, it's online unless you wanted a paper form.
If it's online, I'll look it up.
Okay. And your address again was?
6037 Southwest 14th Street.
Southwest 14th Street. Okay. Yes, I actually asked the City Commission for an alternate member, so that we don't end up shy like we do at some meetings, that we only have three members. That way, if we know that one of you is gonna be out or on vacation, we can call Mr. Rojas to attend.
All right, I think that's a great idea.
We used to have that many years ago.
Many years ago.
I was in alternate once, many, many months ago.
You might as well take a copy of this, so you can follow us.
There you go.
This is what we're going to discuss.
Okay. And the agenda's right there, so... Next item on the agenda is discussion on the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance 282, Section 5, providing for definitions and regulations on mechanical or robotic parking lift systems for garages within the mixed-use corridor. As you know, on the March 22 meeting, we had a development that actually required mechanical lifts in order to be able to have sufficient parking for the development that we were planning, and this board approved it, conditioned upon us coming back with a parking revision to the parking ordinance to allow mechanical robotic parking systems. This is the language that I was able to compile from different cities that have that type of amendment in their ordinance, and if you are okay with the requirements here, then we will go ahead and place it for a public hearing. As far as definitions, mechanical parking means mechanical parking lifts, robotic parking systems, and/or vehicle elevators. For the definition, B, mechanical parking lift means an automated mechanism that lifts vehicles to make space available to park other vehicles below it in a vertical tandem fashion. Robotic parking systems means a mechanical garage using elevator systems to hoist individual vehicles from receiving areas to a separate auto storage area. Vehicle elevator means an elevator used for motor vehicles in lieu of ramps within a parking structure. Number two would be parking for multifamily buildings. Existing multifamily buildings with a deficiency of parking may utilize mechanical parking devices within the space of the use of the existing parking structure. All parking lifts shall be located within a fully enclosed parking garage and shall not be visible from the exterior view. No outside parking lift shall be permitted. Parentheses, two would be the increased number of parking spaces as a result of the mechanical parking under this provision shall not be used to satisfy any accessory off-street requirement of parking. Projects proposing to use mechanical parking devices, robotic parking systems, or vehicles elevators to satisfy accessory and main-use off-street parking requirements. Projects proposing to use such mechanical devices, robotic parking systems, or vehicle elevators to satisfy accessory main-use parking requirements shall prepare schematic floor plans prior to the site plan review by the applicable land use board, and two sets of schematics floor plans shall be required. One of the schematic plans sufficient to show the proposed development project with accessory and main use of off-street parking requirements satisfied by traditional non-mechanism means, meaning all aspects of the design standards for the parking spaces required in zoning ordinance 282, Section 5, and requiring no variances from these provisions. A second set of mechanical schematic plans sufficient to show the same proposed development project utilizing mechanical parking devices, robotic parking systems, and/or vehicle elevators to satisfy accessory and main-use off-street parking requirements. The first set of schematic plans shall be reviewed by the planning department and staff for zoning compliance prior to the site plan review by the hearing by applicable land use board, and then the first set of schematic plans may include one level of below-grade parking spaces, provided that such grade spaces are within the confines of the subject development site. Adjacent private property is not a part of a development site and/or any rights of ways. If it is determined that the schematic plans meet the requirements of the design standards of the city code, then the total number of parking spaces shown on the plans shall be noted. Henceforth, the project may proceed to site plan approval based on the second set of plans using mechanical parking. However, if the first schematic plans include below-grade parking spaces, at least 50% of the numbers shown below the grade parking spaces shown in the first set of plans must be located below grade in the second set of plans utilizing mechanical parking. Further, the allowable residential density and intensity of the uses permitted for the proposed project shall not exceed that which would have been permitted using the number of parking spaces noted on the first set of plans using traditional parking. No variances on these provisions shall be permitted. As part of the conditional review process, the use of mechanical parking devices, robotic parking systems, or vehicle elevators under any provisions of this section, the planning board shall consider the following review criteria, considering each application and mechanical parking systems. Whether the scale of the proposed structure is compatible with the existing urban character of the surrounding neighborhood, whether the proposed use of the mechanical parking results in improvement of the design characteristics and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, and has demonstrated to the planning board how the scale, mass, and volume and height of the building are reduced by the use of the mechanical parking, whether the proposed use of the mechanical parking does not result in an increase in density or intensity over what could be constructed with conventional parking, whether parking lifts or mechanisms are located inside a fully enclosed building and not visible from the exterior view. In cases where the parking lifts are used for self-parking on multifamily residential buildings, whether approval is conditioned upon proper restrictive covenant being limiting the use of each lift to the same unit owner. In cases where mechanical parking lifts are used for valet parking, whether approval is conditioned upon the proper restrictive covenant being provided stipulating that a valet service operator must provide for such parking for so long as the use continues. Whether a traffic study has been provided with details of ingress and egress and circulation within the mechanical parking facility and the technical and staffing requirements necessary to ensure that the proposed mechanical parking system does not cause excessive stacking, waiting, or backups onto the public right-of-way. Whether the proposed operation plans, including hours of operation, number of employees, maintenance requirements, noise specifications, and emergency procedures have been provided. In cases where the proposed facility includes accessory use in addition to the parking garage, whether the accessory uses are in proportion to the facility as a whole, and delivery of merchandise and removal of refuse, and any additional impacts upon the surrounding neighborhood created by the scale and intensity of the proposed accessory use are adequately addressed. Whether the proximity of the use, whether the proximity of the proposed facility to similar structures and to residential uses creates adverse impacts, and how the impacts are mitigated, whether a cumulative effect of the proposed facility with the adjacent and nearby structures arises, and how such cumulative effects will be addressed. For mechanical parking devices, robotic parking systems, and vehicle elevators must also satisfy the following conditions. The noise or vibration from the operation of the mechanical parking lifts, car elevators, or robotic parking systems shall not be plainly audible to or felt by any individual standing outside the apartment or hotel unit at any adjacent nearby property. In addition, the noise-vibration barriers shall be utilized to ensure that the surrounding walls decrease sound and the vibrations emissions outside of the parking garage. For mechanical lifts, the parking lift platform must be fully low-bearing and must be sealed of a sufficient width and length to prevent dripping liquids or debris onto the vehicle below. A freestanding mechanical parking lift must be designed so that the power is required to lift the car, but then no power is required to lower the car, in order to ensure that the lift can be lowered and the top of the vehicle can be accessed in the event of power outages. Robotic garages and vehicle elevators must have backup generators sufficient to power the system. All mechanical lifts must be designed to prevent lowering of the lift when a vehicle is parked below the lift. The ceiling heights of any parking level with parking lifts within the parking garage shall be a minimum of 11 feet 6 inches. All mechanical parking systems, including lifts, elevators, robotic systems, must be inspected and certified as safe and good working order by a licensed mechanical engineer at least once a year, and the findings of the inspection shall be summarized in a report signed by the same licensed mechanical engineer or firm. Such reports shall be furnished to the planning director or building official, and all parking lifts shall be maintained and kept in good working order. The proposed use of the mechanical parking systems, including mechanical parking lifts, robotic parking systems, or vehicular elevators for any type of development improvement, including but not limited to the vehicle storage, whether proposed under the provisions of zoning ordinance 282, Section 5, or any other section of the city code, shall require compliance with the provisions of zoning ordinance 282, Section 5, and shall be reviewed and approval of the planning board pursuant to the special use permit for plan development process and zoning ordinance 282, Section 2B.
Okay, that was a long read. Good job.
That was awful.
I had a question, Mr. Pena. If, say, owner of a single-family residence has an enclosed garage, and he happens to be a car collector, would the code will allow for that individual to install one of these lifts?
This is right now just allowing it in existing multifamily areas. We can incorporate that into it if you want.
Right, that's what I was curious, 'cause I have seen a lot of homeowners...
Well, I saw them today as I was looking through them.
With this type of lift that may have a couple of collector cars, and they seem to be... To work very well.
Yeah.
And they're all in enclosed garages, so with the door closed, they're not visible from the street.
We could add a section in there for residential homes.
Okay, I think since we're dealing with it, it may be a good idea to go ahead and allow them, obviously, it would have to be in a fully enclosed garage, not a car garage or...
Yeah, the same standards.
Same standards.
Would this render that project that we approved last month incompatible with this? Because I don't remember seeing a second set of drawings.
Speak to the mic.
I'm sorry. Would this render that project that we approved?
They would have to submit it to the City Commission.
They would have to submit the alternate set of plans?
The two's plans, yes.
I have a question on this paragraph number two on the first page, towards the bottom, where it says, however, if the first set of schematic plans include below-grade parking spaces, at least 50% of the number of below-grade spaces shown on the first set of plans must be located below grade in the second set of plans utilizing mechanical parking. What is the intent of that?
To keep the mechanical parking lifts on the basement level, at least 50% of it on the basement level, not just put them on top because... For some reason.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
That way, they're out of complete sight.
Okay.
And obviously, the actual lift or elevator system, when they submit the plans, the construction drawings, there would be details there to address that.
Of course.
So they know how to reinforce everything, how they're constructed, et cetera.
Of course.
Because these are... I mean, this is just for reference, these pictures.
Correct.
These look more like for a... I'm gonna assume like for a residential application as opposed to a highly-used commercial building.
I looked them up, and there were so many different types that I just got the basic one, just so you can see, but I actually saw one for a residential-type garage that the heights aren't that high, and you have the problem with the garage door opening, but it actually accommodated to make sure that the two units were able to be put in there without touching the garage door. So there's all kinds of different lifts. Those are just to give us an idea of what...
A general idea.
What we're proposing.
Okay, does the applicant need to comply with all these in Section 3? Will he have to respond to each one of these criteria on Section 3 on Page 2?
In order to go before the City Commission, yes.
Yeah.
If we pass this, yes.
Okay. And on that same section on letter D, whether parking lifts or mechanisms are located inside within a fully enclosed building and not visible from exterior view. I read that, and I picture a blank wall on the ground floor.
Well, if you...
Four sides minus the entrance.
No, if you remember the... Actually, the verbiage that you wanted on the... That the whole garage would be shielded with either louvers or something, so that you couldn't see...
Right, some sort of articulation on that ground floor.
Articulation, exactly. To make an aesthetically pleasing building comparable to the other developments that we have.
Can we add some language to that, to this? Something that would...
Would allow for...
Would not only allow, would make them put something in there, place...
That's a good idea.
Some sort of articulation on that, on the...
Because by...
At least facing the street. I don't... You know, on the interior portions, it really doesn't matter.
Facing both streets.
Facing the streets.
Correct.
Because by code, they would have to provide some kind of ventilation there, and something like the louvers and Publix, I think, look nice and work well.
Something that would, you know, not allow me to see just the bar, a black wall on the ground floor.
Good catch. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
My main concern, again, is by not duplicating, but by adding more spaces for parking for these buildings that we might have soon, how is that gonna affect the traffic that's already been considered before? So I remember before, that was your objection, that some of these buildings would create extra traffic. Now, if we add more parking to this building, what's gonna happen to the... I see letter G in photograph three. It says a traffic study will be provided, but again...
Well, that's the reason why you provided traffic study, so that you... That there's no stacking. And all of the buildings, even the ones that have been proposed, actually reduce traffic rather than increase compared to the uses that are there now. The CVS has more traffic stacking than the new building would have during peak hours, according to the traffic study. So... And the way that the new buildings are designed, they're designed so that you come into the building, and there is no immediate parking, no immediate turn into a parking space, so that the people coming behind do not stack out on the road. You actually have to enter the building and find a parking space before you could actually park.
I agree, Mr. Pena, but again, when they presented these plans for these buildings, they were counting on X amount of parking spaces. Now, are we adding more parking by providing these lifts?
No, you're not adding more parking.
Not to the existing ones.
Because you can't increase the density.
No.
This... All it does is, on buildings such as that building there, tomorrow, say, they have 100% occupancy, and everybody decides to have a vehicle, which is not the norm, they have the ability to, in order to alleviate stuff for their residents, to be able to put parking lifts, which I'm sure they'll charge them for. charge them for.
Do you understand now, yeah? Thanks.
Okay, the, um, Mr. Penya, we would have to then make a, a motion and approve this, or the...
Just a motion to go forward, and that way, we'll add in the, the items that you spoke about, and, and we'll bring it back as a public hearing at the, uh, yeah, the following agenda on twenty-sixth.
So, I would make a motion to go ahead and proceed with these plans.
My second.
Okay, with the included, uh, louvers and allow residential...
Yeah, right ones.
Okay. On the motion, Eugenio Gonzalez?
Yes.
Uh, Hibeto Gonzalez?
Yes.
Diana Rio?
Yes.
Alvaro Lurido?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It passes.
Okay. That's the last item on your agenda tonight.
Okay, the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of June twenty-eight, two thousand sixteen, is now adjourned. It is, uh, eight oh five PM for the record.
Good meeting. Uh, one, you, you cannot discuss anything about the, what's coming up on FPL? You can't...
Sure. Uh, I mean, uh, at least, not in a public forum, yeah, but whatever question I have.
Is it a building that they're gonna propose, or just, uh, an expansion of the, uh, new station?
No, it's actually, it's actually an independent station next to that one. And, and what they're proposing is, in order to, uh, technically, under state...
Okay, you're going to, okay, okay.
See, on... Under state statute, they don't even have to come through us for a new station.
Right.
Uh, state statute has been...